It's not your fault. I T.
Technology hates me.
Didn't want to say anything.
Yeah, sounds like we're on now. Okay. To open our council meetings, we continue our tradition of inviting Villa Park distinguished citizens to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. This evening, we are pleased to honor Dr. Bob Hilton as our distinguished citizen for July. We are especially pleased to honor our veterans as their efforts have protected our freedoms, including our right to recite the pledge. Dr. Hilton grew up in a small town of Waynesboro, Tennessee, population 1,000. His grandfather was the town doctor and his parents were teachers. Bob attended Vanderbilt University on scholarship as a pre-med student graduating in chemistry. After graduation, Bob earned money for medical school studying cures for tuberculosis in the Tennessee State Medical Laboratory. Bob attended the University of Tennessee Medical School in Memphis and interned at the University of Pennsylvania. Dr. Bob loves airplanes and volunteered for active service with the United States Air Force after graduating from medical school. While awaiting an appointment to flight surgeon training, Bob began his medical practice in Carbon Hill, Alabama, population 2,100, and was the county doctor for several months. Bob likes small towns. Dr. Hilton was in active service as a captain in the Air Force from 1956 through 1958 with a military advisory group in Taiwan and as chief flight surgeon at Yokota Air Base in Japan. These were tense times in that area of the world, and Dr. Hilton was responsible for keeping our pilots in three air groups of F-86 Sabre Jet fighters and seven airfields healthy and battle-ready. Discharged in 1958, Dr. Hilton attended OB-GYN training at the University of California, San Francisco. There, he met Nancy, a surgical nurse. They were married in 1961. As a resident surgeon, one of Dr. Hilton's interns was a young Sam Kowanami. Bob and Nancy forged a lasting friendship with Sam and his wife Carol. In fact, Dr. Hilton and Carol Kowanami would later serve together on the Villa Park City Council. Long way from San Francisco. Dr. Hilton began his OB-GYN practice in 1962 with both Palm Harbor and St. Joseph Hospitals in Garden Grove. In 1964, Dr. Hilton became a member of the committee that ran the residency program of the UC Irvine Medical School and was a clinical professor of OB-GYN at UCI for 35 years. During his years in practice, Dr. Hilton delivered more than 4,000 babies. Maybe there's a couple of those here tonight. Anyway, Dr. Hilton was a third-year member of the Orange County Medical Association and delegate to the California Medical Association, representing the Orange County Medical Association. Bob and Nancy moved into their new house on Bryley Street in Villa Park with their son and two daughters in 1968. At that time, Bryley was the easternmost street in Villa Park. Bob enjoyed playing with his kids in the orange groves east of Bryley as much as he enjoyed playing in the woods of Waynesboro in his youth. He participated in Indian guides and Indian princes and scouting with his kids. Bob and Nancy were married 53 years before her passing in 2014. Dr. Hilton's first involvement with the city was with the Villa Park Homeowners Association, which in 1970 became the city's planning commission. Bob served two terms on the Villa Park City Council, the first from 1978 to 1982, and the second from 1986 to 1990. He served as mayor from 1981 to 1982. He was the mayor when I first moved to Villa Park in late 1981. Villa Park experienced substantial growth during Dr. Hilton's service on the Planning Commission and Council. During Dr. Hilton's terms on council, many of the ordinances that still guide our city were developed. It was also during this period that the council resisted a young Governor Jerry Brown's attempts to impose high-density development on Villa Park. That challenge continues with the same governor today. Dr. Hilton retired from medical practice in 1999 and remains active in the Association of Naval Aviation and volunteers at the Chino Airport Air Museum. Prior to Nancy's passing in 2014, they also participated in Villa Park Women's League activities. Dr. Hilton has exemplified the best of Villa Park: family, country, community, volunteerism, and leadership. Dr. Hilton, would you please honor us by leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pardon me, we'll sit down. We had these. John was mayor, and I'm proud to support the city of Villa Park's name. If I can get it on. All right. Try once more, Bill. There. But it's still fit? Yep.
Dr. Hilton's jacket says Villa Park Council on the front.
How many years old is that jacket?
A long time ago. All right. Please put your hand over your heart or salute and not repeat, but stay with me. Pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now we will, the council will step up front and we'll have our picture taken with Dr. Hilton.
My leg.
I think I walked that far. Dr. Hilton, this is the.
This is the good spot.
Good spot.
Very much. Time for everything. Where is it proudly? You look great, Bob. Think I'm doing this right. Did you get it?
I guess one more presentation from Supervisor Todd Spencer's office.
On behalf of Supervisor Todd Spencer, congratulations on this great recognition. It's people like you that make this community what it is. Orange County is a great place to live, and thank you for all of your contributions to this community.
Shack over the side. Yeah. Which is better?
The cameras will be able to pick you up, so if you stand over here.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just work your way around.
Well, it's too hot to keep you waiting very long. I just want to say I'm indeed honored by this great honor, and I appreciate it, and I enjoyed living and serving in Villa Park very much. I still think to my own, although I'm in the Meridian Senior Living Place at present, I tell the residents there that they should be positive and active, and I had, and talk to the Lord every night. I have a plaque in my apartment that says, "Live, Love, and Laugh." So that's the words I would leave you with. Thank you very much again. It's been a great honor.
Thank you, Dr. Hilton.
Would it be appropriate to back grate the premises now?
Whenever you'd like. Otherwise, I'm sure we'll put you to sleep. Okay. Well, thank you. At this time, I would like to ask all of those in the audience to please silence your cell phones or turn them off if possible. The Villa Park City Council and the staff welcome you to this meeting, and we encourage your participation. If you wish to address the city council, please complete and submit a speaker card to the city clerk before the scheduled meeting time. City clerk is over here to my right. Speaker cards can be found at the entrance to the city council chambers, and speakers will be limited to a time period of five minutes. Wait a moment for the city manager. Our Dr. Hilton brought quite the entourage. All deserved. Okay, we'll begin with presentations and announcements. Our first presentation will be by the Orange County Sheriff's Department.
Yeah, there's some sort of feedback or background noise. There's some feedback.
Do you hear it?
For the speaker here.
If you could bear with us for a few minutes, we've got another audio problem. Okay. Well, let's proceed. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Protam, city council members, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Lieutenant Patrick Rich, and I am the Chief of Police Services for the city of Villa Park. Honors me tonight to be able to present our crime stats for the month of June 2018. In June of 2018, we had two reported residential burglaries in the city of Villa Park. One of them was through an unlocked bedroom window, and the second one was a smashed window to gain entry. The only significant event other than that criminal-wise that occurred in the city was actually a stop by one of our proactive deputies who, on the 27th, witnessed a suspicious vehicle occupied by four subjects. That deputy conducted a car stop of that vehicle for traffic violations and was able to conduct a consent search where he located several items of stolen property that were tied to a residential burglary earlier in the day in the area of North Tustin. So he was able to clear up a couple burglaries and hopefully keep someone from committing more burglaries in our fine city. We also had responded to 355 calls for service, and that includes calls for service and incidents that are generated or self-generated by the deputies working in the city. There were three traffic collisions that were responded to. Two of those were hit and runs, and one of those was a vehicle versus a pedestrian with no significant, excuse me, significant injuries. The deputies working in the city of Villa Park issued 75 parking citations, excuse me, 75 traffic citations and 23 parking citations. Also wanted to make sure to remind everyone that the city of Villa Park and the Orange County Sheriff's Department, as well as our partners from the Orange County Fire Authority and several other county agencies, and will be involved with the National Night Out on August 7th, which will be right here, and please, everyone come attend and join us. We'd like to ask the residents to please remain diligent in keeping your city safe, and as always, if you see something, say something. Please call the Sheriff's Department. We would much rather respond to something that isn't a crime or we don't need to respond to than not respond to something where we can possibly do something to take some proactive action. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions?
I have, I have a question. You said we had 355 calls. Is that normal for our city?
That is pretty close. We average around between 300 and 400. And again, that's calls for service and initiated events by the deputies.
Right. That's quite a bit considering that we only had two crimes, so that's why, yes.
Correct. There's a lot of other things that, you know, the Sheriff's Department responds to that are not, you know, criminal in nature. If something happens in the city, and as in all law enforcement, if it doesn't, you know, fall within someone else's purview or someone else's area of expertise, they typically will call and will send the deputy out to see what they can, you know, do. That's citizen assist, that's, you know, people looking for information, that's traffic incidents, that's deputies doing traffic stops. That's everything that the deputies do in the city.
Thank you for defining that.
Thank you. Orange County Fire Authority.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, fellow council members, city staff and residents. My name is Ron Roberts. I'm one of your battalion chiefs with the Orange County Fire Authority, serving the city of Villa Park. This evening, in my report, say welcome back to Lieutenant Rich. It's good to have you back. As far as our calls for service over this reporting period, as you can imagine, our majority of our calls have been medical aids. We have seen a slight increase in call numbers. I can tell you that the, we did not respond to any fires, nor did we suffer any fire damage during this reporting period. We did have a fun event on the July 4th parade, being able to lead that off and continue that tradition, so thank you for that. We're very grateful. And my safety message tonight, I just wanted to remind everybody listening, last month I talked about pool safety and watching the water. With the heat wave we're having right now, it brings up the point even more for all of us to hydrate, keep your body full of water. Just a reminder that caffeinated drinks, coffee, soda, energy drinks do the opposite. They dehydrate, so you want to drink as much water as you can, keep replenishing those bodily fluids as much as you can. With that, that's end my report. Happy to answer any questions.
Chief, thank you so much for your support at the parade. It was fun. There were an awful lot of people there, and you guys did a lot to help us out. We really appreciate it.
Well, thanks for having us. We really appreciate it.
It was fun.
I have a comment. I heard you say that you had not, you did not respond to any fires during this reporting period, and I'd like to point out during that reporting period, it was 4th of July.
Correct.
While we sold fireworks, safe and sane fireworks in the city.
Yes.
And that is wonderful. We did have extra patrol for three days or two and a half days. I know that your officers were on the street, and that was something that we did increase this year, but thank you to the residents. Thank you for being diligent, but what a great 4th of July to not have anyone call you out for any fires.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. I think one of our residents had a question, too.
I spoke to the fire chief and so forth, talking about hydrating and making sure we're all, we are all hydrated during these times of heat. Now, what are we supposed to do in light of Jerry Brown's edict that we're only allowed to consume 55 gallons of water per day? Is that a gallon again, 55 gallons?
I don't think so. I hope so.
Mayor, and I know that was meant in good spirit, I mean, just FYI, so people understand that, it's not really a per-person requirement, it's imposed on the district. So districts based upon how many customers they have are supposed to limit it. Now, that could end up further down the road and higher rates, stuff like that, but it's actually been a bit spun, a bit different than it actually is, so, just so people know.
Thank you. Okay, our next presentation is by the Villa Park Library.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. I'm Samantha Smith, Branch Manager of the Villa Park Library, and as you know, the last few months, we've been undergoing a redesign at the library, and we are happy to report that we've now received new paint, new shelving, new furniture, and a new configuration. We thank the Friends of the Villa Park Library, the City of Villa Park, and the County of Orange for working together to complete these building projects. And on behalf of OC Public Libraries and the Friends of the Villa Park Library, you are cordially invited to view our new look at an open house on Thursday, August 2nd from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. It'll be a fun event and a way to showcase all the work that's been going on at the library. Of course, you're always welcome to drop by the library anytime during open hours and take a look then as well. Library staff and Friends of the Villa Park Library have worked hard to create a library that's both physically attractive and functional. Quite a bit of thought went into the redesign. We've measured previous and existing shelving space with a measuring stick. We looked at photos of other contemporary libraries. We worked with seasoned library vendors and design consultants, and we engaged in a lot of discussion. The wonderful thing about the new shelving is that it's on wheels, so it can be reconfigured at any time to accommodate space needs and library needs. It allows us a lot of flexibility and the opportunity to change to meet new demands. We can also function, we can always add additional shelving as needed as well. This new furniture and shelving allows us to host book groups, children's craft projects, and computer classes, which we've all done in the last month, and we weren't able to do that before, so we're super appreciative. We also want to remind everyone that this is your library, and if you visit us and you don't see what you want at the library, feel free to ask any library staff member. We are really fortunate to be entering the new fiscal year, and we have a healthy book budget, and so we are able to purchase, whether it's one book or a series of books. If you come to the library and you don't see what you're looking for, please ask us because we can purchase it and add it to the collection. We can also request materials from, we can also request materials from any of the other OC Public Libraries branches and have them here for you within one week. So we really try our best to accommodate you and ensure that the library is meeting your needs, but if they don't, please come up and talk with staff at any time because we have the budget. We have a budget to buy DVDs and audiobooks and materials, all different types of things, so please make, if there's something you find, you don't find here, please come and talk with us. Again, we really appreciated everyone's patience during this process, and we're super excited to showcase our new look. So once again, please join us for our open house Thursday, August 2nd from 4:00 to 6:00. One other program we'd like to invite you to is an upcoming author visit. That'll be this Saturday, July 28th at 2:00 p.m. New York Times bestselling author Michelle Gable will be visiting the library. She will speak about her books and answer questions. She's a great speaker, and we're really looking forward to hosting her, so if you're available, please consider joining us. Our summer reading program is coming to an end on Saturday, so if you're doing the reading program, please turn in your log by Saturday evening for an opportunity to be entered in the opportunity drawing. We're happy to repeat to report that over 200 people have signed up for the reading program this summer. That's a great number, and we've also hosted a number of programs, including Reading with Deputy, the Library Luau, a slime-making program, a genealogy program for kids, a teddy bear picnic, a computer class for kids, a computer class for adults, and more. So we've had a great summer, and we hope you have, too. Finally, I'd like to inform you that I've accepted a position to be the new regional branch manager at the Tustin Library. That's effective August 3rd, so unfortunately, I will be leaving my position as branch manager for the Villa Park Library. This was not an easy decision to make on my part. I would never have made the choice to leave except for to take on this new opportunity that will allow me to pursue career goals and, you know, what's best for my family. The city, the community, the Friends of the Library, and everyone I've met here at Villa Park has been so wonderful to work with, and I've never, again, I would never have wanted to leave, but this new promotion does allow me to grow professionally. It's bittersweet, but ultimately, it's the right choice for me, and I just consider everyone I've met here a friend, and so I'll miss you all, and if you're ever in the Tustin area, please drop by the library and say hello. During the transition, please feel free to, feel free to reach out to me or any library staff member if you have questions or concerns about what's going on at the library, and we hope to have a new branch manager in sometime in September. And once again, it's been an honor to serve as the branch manager of Villa Park, and you're a wonderful city, and whoever comes in is super lucky. So that's the end. Thank you. Does anyone have any comments or questions?
Samantha. Thanks. I just wanted to say, thank you for everything that you've done for us. Thank you for being so involved in our community and coming to our city council meetings. You are truly going to be lost, a huge loss for us.
You know, I've been, I've known you for quite a while now, and we've served together with the Friends of Villa Park Library, and what you've done over here is nothing short of amazing.
Oh, thank you.
And we really appreciate your, your service to this community, and you'll be missed considerably, and we wish you a lot of luck in your new job. If you get homesick, come on back, okay?
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, you're not going to get away so early, easily. You need to step up a bit.
Okay.
Now, both Samantha's only been with us for 10 months. She's made an incredible impact, and we all love her. Particularly the Friends of the Villa Park Library, it's really enjoyed working with her, looking at what she's done with her programs, the remodeling of the facility and so forth. It's amazing that she can accomplish all that in just 10 months. So we have a proclamation for her. I'll be giving it to you. Whereas Samantha Smith has been a member of the Orange County Public Library since 2009, has held various positions during her tenure, whereas Samantha started as an intern with the County Riverside Library, and is library assistant at Maria Public Library, and she was then promoted to librarian to the County Orange Library. Whereas, since September 2017, Samantha's been serving as branch manager at the Villa Park Library. While here, she has implemented several programs, initiated and remodeled the library, and strengthened the relations between the Villa Park community and the Villa Park library. Whereas Samantha will be leaving Villa Park Library on August 2nd to begin a new chapter in her career as head librarian at the City of Tustin's Library, and now therefore, with the resolve, the city council of the city of Villa Park, California hereby recognizes and commends Samantha Smith for her time of dedicated service to the Villa Park Library and to the Villa Park community, and wishes her well in her future endeavors. It is 24th of July, 2017.
Mayor, you want to get a picture?
Photo.
Oh, yes.
The whole council, maybe?
Would the councilman like to come down and join me?
I would now like to invite Dr. Gunn Marie Hansen, the Superintendent of the Orange Unified School District, to make an address. Been looking forward to having you come and speak with us and hope we can make this a regular event.
Thank you very much.
We have, there are four of the Orange Unified School District schools in Villa Park with, I think, over 4,000 students, so our population in Villa Park just about doubles during the school day, so the Orange Unified School District is a big part of Villa Park, and we're very pleased that, that you're here. So looking forward to your presentation.
Okay, thank you very much. Mayor Caldecott, city council members, thank you for having us here this evening. As was mentioned, I'm Gunn Marie Hansen, Superintendent of Orange Unified School District, and I've been in that position for six months officially now. Prior to that, I was the interim superintendent and then the deputy superintendent for four years and three years as assistant superintendent. So I've been with Orange Unified for a total of eight years. I love the district. We have incredible staff, and with that said, I just want to commit to the city of Villa Park that we continue to want to build our partnership, ensure that our schools are meeting the needs of all of our students, and I, I'm here today just to give you a little bit of an update of what's going on in the district. It's the summertime, so we, you know, as was mentioned over here by the wonderful librarian that we're sorry she's leaving, we have a lot of summer programs going on as well, and we really appreciate the work that our partners in the county do in terms of providing literacy programs and ongoing learning for our students. We also offer summer school at our high schools and our middle schools, and we continue to do during the summer major renovation projects at all of our schools. Currently, we have maintenance and renovation projects going on with carpeting, HVAC updates, and in addition to that, the really great news is Measure S, our bond. We sold our bond just last month, and the great news was the timing on that. The Board of Education went a little bit early out to sale of our bonds, and we were able to save the taxpayers $4.7 million because we got a great interest rate. In the meantime, what we've been doing and planning for implementing Measure S is that we've been spending the district funds to get all the plans, schematic designs, everything ready, and we're pleased to say that Orange High School had the first groundbreaking June, I think it was June the 8th, and we're rolling with the rest of our groundbreaking that will be occurring at the rest of our high schools. El Medina Villa Park, Canyon High School, Villa Park is scheduled El Medina Villa Park, Canyon High School, Villa Park is scheduled for late fall. And of course, we'll come and give you a lot of information as we go towards that, and we'll invite all of you to be part of that process. This summer, what is exciting for us is that we are working on renovating our athletic fields. We're putting in all of our high schools new all-weather track and turf fields. The Board of Education has invested our maintenance budget into ensuring that our athletic fields are up to standard. And I have some staff here, which I'll present, which can give you some additional information on that. Our teachers are going through professional development during the summer. We do have some news regarding your principal at Villa Park Elementary School. She did get a promotion to the district office. That's Rayanne Little. And she's taking a position as the coordinator of teacher induction. So actually, she'll be running a lot of the teacher quality, the teacher training for our district. So we have appointed a new principal for Villa Park Elementary. Her name is Dr. Sarah Beggs, and she's been with our district for several years as both a teacher and as an administrator. She got her PhD from Chapman University. She's a wonderful person. I'm sure she's going to come out here and introduce herself to all of you, and you'll develop a great partnership with her as well. Just a couple of more pieces in terms of good news for all of you. I know Mr. Howard is here, and Sheldon Glass have worked very hard with the city as well as the Sheriff's Department to deal with some of the issues at the village with the students that are there unsupervised. And, you know, we've got a lot of things in order, and thank you, Mr. Franks, for also working with us on that. But the good news is that the principal is implementing not a late start next year, but an early release. So there will no longer be the early time that the students are unsupervised. What we will have at the school is an early release on the Wednesdays for the professional development and the student programs that are running there. So with that, what I'd like to do is introduce some key new leaders in Orange Unified School District. I'll have them say a few words about themselves, but to let you know that with Mr. Christensen's retirement and with Mr. Serrera's retirement, we did a long search. Board was looking for a very high-quality chief business official. And so we now have Mr. Dave Rivera, who comes to us from a neighboring district, and I'll have him introduce himself. And then in addition to that, our director of operations in our district, Scott Harvey, is going to assume some of the leadership responsibilities with Measure S. Mr. Ron Labs announced his retirement recently, so we're doing a restructure of the contacts for the Measure S bond program. And I've been in contact with Mr. Franks, and we continue to work closely with our district personnel on any issues or questions that might come up with that program. So I'd like to have Mr. Rivera introduce himself, and then Mr. Harvey as well, and then they can give you an update on some of the athletic fields. And we'll also be happy to answer any questions you might have. Okay?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, city councilmen, and the community. I look forward, this is an exciting time in Orange Unified, and I look forward to the efforts that we have in beautifying our schools and making our schools the center of our community and learning environment. I have 30 years of experience working in school districts and working on bond programs, working on bond programs up to $600 million. So I have a good deal of experience on selling, going to the rating agencies, as we did in May on my fourth day on the job. And we were able to get a very high rating for the district, which also generates savings for our taxpayers, which means that they pay lower interest on the bonds that we sell. So we're very happy with the results. We'll be giving the board an update tomorrow on the most recent transactions. And you're going to be seeing a lot of activity occur in Orange with the work that's being done, now with the groundbreaking, and as we roll out the projects as we're coming forward for the Science Building. So I look forward to collaborating and working with the city. And there's a lot of great things here happening, and I'm proud to be part of this team. Thank you.
Thank you.
Although, I think I have been up here one other time, and it was not under the best of circumstances. We were talking about a rodent issue, I think, at Villa Park Elementary, which is eradicated and wonderful now. And just to, on that note, I know that we haven't had a chance to talk to you since we did the dedication of the bell at Villa Park Elementary. And we did some amazing things with the community in order to make the historical part of that Villa Park Elementary renovation, if you want to call it that, and taking down the historical buildings and building out the new quad, which the entire community, especially, obviously, the parents and the students are ecstatic with their new quad. It's, and I think most of you have seen it, it's a wonderful place for them to hang out. And like I said, with your guys' support, it's been a huge help, and thank you for your support in that. So Villa Park Elementary is getting some new carpeting and flooring, as Dr. Hansen mentioned, as well as the other schools, Serrano and Sara Villa and other schools within your boundaries here are getting renovated. STEM labs are being added. A lot of exciting things are happening in maintenance and operations. In terms of Measure S, Measure S is getting kicked off in this city this fall, as Dr. Hansen said, with our groundbreaking. We hope to have our DSA package completed and stamped for approval in September, probably actually before that, maybe even late August. So, but our hope is to, you know, have an event much like Orange had, which you'll all be invited to, and which will groundbreak for the new building. And if anyone doesn't know exactly what that entails is the 300-building at Villa Park High School will come down, and a new building will be put in its place, a two-story building much like the other two-story buildings. But the nice thing about it is that it will not have the big space impact that you would think. It looks like the other buildings. It will fit in nicely with the landscape. I know a lot of people are worried about that. It will be a little bit further on towards the street at Taft, but it will be, you know, blended in very nicely. The pickup drop-off will be coordinated so that it's a little bit better flow of traffic. We've been working with Steve Franks on that project as well. And the city engineers to make sure that the impact is as least as possible. We're also taking to our board, hopefully in August, depending on our conversations with the city staff, a SEQA, which is the California Environmental Act, that we would take notice of exemption to our board at that time, to where we would say that we are exempt. Because although we're adding a building, we're not adding any additional students or we're taking down a building, obviously, and adding one. So that's the least impact possible. And then as far as the fields go, as Dr. Hansen mentioned, we'll be starting on our field renovation this Thursday. So you may see, you know, earth moving and things going on. We have water control to make sure that the residents don't see that dust in their pools and other places. So we are making sure that we're taking all precautions and following the AQMD requirements at the field. So, but the bad part about that for residents is I know a lot of residents use that track to walk. That track will actually be off-limits for possibly 11 months. Because not only will we be renovating the track and field, but eventually we'll be doing a whole ADA upgrade for that property, which will include sidewalks, concrete, things like that that we'll have to put in place. So although the fields may be in and used by some athletics, the community will not have access to those fields because of safe access and ADA until probably this time next year. So, just an update on that. So any other questions for myself, facilities?
Are there any questions for any of the presenters from the Orange Unified School District?
I don't have many questions, but I just want to make a comment. I had a nice meeting today at the district with Mr. Rivera, and I'd like to say I look forward to you working with the district. And as the chairman of the Measure S Oversight Committee, I am very pleased for your transparency that you gave us today. We had a very nice meeting. We do have a meeting tomorrow, in case anybody is interested. We do have meetings quarterly. If any of the public wants to know what's going on with the bond, it is our tax dollars. It's taken 50 years for us to pass the bond. So if you want to know the details, you're welcome tomorrow at the district to come to our meeting. It's not very entertaining, but it is very informative.
We will have chilled water in case it's necessary.
Okay. Thank you. It's a pleasure meeting you.
Okay. Thank you again, and I hope that we can make this a regular presentation at our city council meetings. It's very helpful. Thank you. Okay. We now move on to council member meeting attendance reports, first being the Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control District.
That would be me. The Vector Control District Board met last week. And the first thing, on my recommendation, the Budget and Finance Committee recommended the board to establish a Section 115 trust administered by PARS to pre-fund their pensions and to fund the Section 115 trust with $2 million transferred from the district's retirement contingency reserve. And the board approved the recommendation, establish the 115 trust for pensions. The board then approved amendments to their fund balance and reserve policy, one due to establishing IRS 115 trusts and elimination of reserve contingency that they had. Additional policies amended to include additional $500,000 in adblocker taxes to the facility's reserve fund until the board has made the decisions whether to renovate existing facilities or move to a new facility. And finally, the board selected a candidate to vote for the California Special District Board Directors, seat A in the Southern Network. Again, the board went with my recommendation of Joseph Kelly, who directed the Big Bear Airport District, after I told the board that his opponent incumbent two years ago actively campaigned against me. So the board recommended him by acclamation. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilman Nelson. Next report is the Orange County Sanitation District, and that's me. I attended the Board of Directors meeting on June 27th at the district offices in Fountain Valley. At this meeting, a fiscal year 2018-2019 budget in the amount of $383 million was adopted. This is a $39 million reduction from the previous fiscal year budget, and that is due to reductions in the capital improvement program cash flow requirements. So there's, you know, it's really just a paper change, but basically, the sanitation district is maintaining their expenditure levels at a relatively constant rate. I also attended the Operations Committee meeting on July 18th, and items related to operation and maintenance were discussed at this meeting. Any questions?
Yeah, I had a question, Mr. Mayor. I have a copy of a letter here that was written to the sanitation district in support of something that I'm not aware of, but it says that we, Villa Park, show our support for the sanitation district's funding request. Unless I missed a meeting or something, I don't know anything about it. I'm not sure it's appropriate to speak for me when we show our support for things unless it comes before the city council and we vote on it, I assume.
Well, this is a traditional, this is a short notice request for support of, I believe, some grant monies for a project.
But shouldn't things like that come before here?
If there's time.
There's time.
Yeah.
But I would appreciate it next time, maybe if you would, you know, I support, but don't say "our" support or "we" support without the board, without the council's approval, I would think. That's appropriate.
Okay.
Because I don't know anything about this, and unless I missed it in one of the meetings, I'm not sure I support it or not. I could if I knew something about it. So I would appreciate it if, from now on, we do that, if we could. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Orange County Fire Authority.
That's my committee. I attended several meetings this month on behalf of the city of Villa Park and its residents, and attended these meetings at the Orange County Fire Authority headquarters, both the General Board as well as the Human Resources Committee. In particular, I want to talk about the Human Resources Committee. They voted to continue working towards a fitness and health preservation and workers' compensation reduction program, liability cost, I should say, program for its members, the firefighters. And this program basically is, in essence, it's trying to get every firefighter in the best possible shape. Make sure they go through annual health screenings, make sure that they're looked at by physicians, frankly, whether they want to or not. They're in a dangerous profession. They, as good as the protection is, they still face risks that most folks do not. And this program is a wonderful program, and myself and the committee members support it. Other issues that the Fire Authority, of course, is dealing with are the possible departures of the City of Irvine, the City of Placentia, and possibly adding the City of Garden Grove to the Orange County Fire Authority Board. These matters are traditionally closed session in nature at this point in time. When a significant development comes forward, or if I have further news, I will relay those to you. I would encourage everybody to go online and review the minutes if you're curious about these. I'm happy to discuss these at length. But in the interest of getting through this meeting and talking about other issues, I'll wait till afterwards if you have any questions. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any questions? Okay. Budget and finance.
No meeting.
Library advisor.
Let's see. Orange County Library Advisory Board.
No meeting.
City Schools Advisory.
There's no meeting till October.
Community Development.
No meeting.
Friends of the Villa Park Library, there was, let's see, the librarian was just here and gave that presentation. So the comments were previously summarized in her report. Human Resources.
No meeting.
Infrastructure Management Advisory. I attended the July 19th meeting of the committee, and at this meeting, a number of items were discussed, including the status of the street sewer and storm drain repair projects, and the status of the traffic study for the new Science Building at the Villa Park High School. In addition, our chairman, Lee Cabrera, provided recommendations for stabilizing the trails to reduce our maintenance requirements. Investment Advisory.
We did have a meeting this time. Since we have a meeting quarterly, we had our July meeting. And the committee unanimously approved sending a draft of the investment policy statement for non-Calpurs pension and benefit trust funds to the city council for approval. Our chair, Underwood, will prepare an introduction by the end of August, anticipation of taking it to the September city council meeting. In our investment portfolio, we looked at the portfolio balance, activity transactions. Frank Davis distributed copies of financial reports that the committee reviewed, discussed, and asked questions. In looking at investment decisions ahead, the committee asked the staff to review the lengthened investment ladder, organizing the five-year mode initially, and amount accordingly relative to cash flow. Needs preserved integrity of ladder but meeting the needs. In our kind of open forum for new ideas, the committee requested staff prepare a summary matching short-term and long-term financial needs, and requested the following items be at the next investment advisory committee agenda. A comparison of three-year and five-year interest rates on investments for possible transition to new investment ladder timeframe, and preparation of a graph representing city investment maturities. As well as the committee requested a PARS presentation to the committee at the January 2019 meeting. And I thought that was quite a bit for, we got in a one-hour meeting, because our chair is so efficient.
Yes. Any questions?
I'm not the chair. Bill Underwood's the chair.
I know.
Oh, okay. Just want to make that clear.
Law Enforcement Advisory Committee.
No meeting. Next meeting will be in September.
Public Safety.
No meeting.
Okay. Public Works and Engineering. On July 13th, I attended a meeting of the committee, and preventive maintenance needs and updates on street and sewer repair projects and street lining were discussed. Community Services Foundation.
We did have a meeting, and there were several topics discussed. First of all, August 3rd, there'll be a concert at the park. I'd like to invite everybody, the entire community, to come out and enjoy that. It's a Neil Diamond performer. So again, August 3rd. We did decide on events coming up in December that I think everyone was curious about. The Villa Park Tree Lighting Ceremony will be on December 3rd. The Santa Parade, which we all look forward to, is on 12/8, and the Boat Parade is on 12/9. We also had a subcommittee meeting this past week to discuss the Santa Tour and some of the events that took place during the Santa Tour, so that we can hopefully make it a much better experience for our constituents out there that are sometimes waiting long periods of time for us to show up. So we're trying to do things to make it better for them and their whole experience. So the group is looking at tradition along with ways that we can optimize our circuit around the city to make it a little bit better. Also, I've attended three subcommittee meetings over the course of the last, since the last council meeting, to discuss fundraising and other things as it relates to the community center.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you. Okay. At this time, members of the public may address the council on any off-agenda items within the subject manager's items within the subject manager's jurisdiction of the council, provided that no action may be taken on off-agenda items unless authorized by law. Opportunities will also be provided for public comment on each agenda item. Comments are limited to five minutes per person and 30 minutes for all comments. City Manager, are there any speaker cards?
Yes, excuse me, we received four blue slips, but all four of those have indicated they would like to talk to item number two, which is the public hearing on the short-term rental ordinance. So I would suggest that unless there's a problem with that, we discuss that, we talk about the, there's no general comments for public hearing, for public comments.
Okay, thank you. With that, we'll move on to our first public hearing, and the first hearing is the review to waive reading in full of all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda. Staff, please give the staff report.
This is the monthly process we go through to expedite the meetings, in which cases we waive the reading, the requirement to read the minutes and the resolutions and the ordinances, so we'd recommend approval.
Okay. Council members, do you have any questions to staff?
No.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Please vote.
That passes by a 5-0 vote.
Thank you. Our next hearing is the municipal code amendments to prohibit short-term rentals on all zoning districts within the city. Staff, please provide the staff report.
This is the second and what would constitute as the final reading of the proposed ordinance that would prohibit short-term rentals in all zoning districts within the city. You recall, the first reading was held on June 26th, it was approved by the council in a 3-2 vote. There have been no changes to the ordinances since that time. However, we have received some correspondence, which I will let the city attorney elaborate on.
Right, so yesterday, we got a letter making certain claims and arguments pertaining to the applicability of the proposed short-term rental ordinance, and because that contains potential significant exposure to litigation for the city, what I would recommend is that the council moved to go into closed session, so we can talk to some, about some of those legal issues a little bit. And the manner to effectuate that was that, to make the finding that this came to the council's attention since the posting of the agenda, which it did, we got it yesterday, and that there is a need for immediate action, we're voting on that tonight, so there's immediate action, and therefore add a closed session under significant exposure to litigation in Government Code Section 54956.9D2, and then we'll go into closed sessions, I'd say for maybe 10 minutes, to talk about some of these issues. So there would be a motion to add this to the agenda and then go into closed session on those grounds.
So we need a motion by council.
I'll move to add a second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. All vote.
That passes by a 5-0 vote, so we would adjourn to closed session. Like I said, I think that, city attorney, I would agree to take about 15 minutes. When we return, there are four speakers, and we also received some other written correspondence from the Realtors Association that I'll share with the council.
Okay, well, now adjourn to closed session.
Just wait.
I'll now call the regular meeting of the Villa Park City Council back into order.
You know, Mayor, before we begin, we did, as we said, go in a closed session. There was no reportable action.
With that, I'd recommend that we have go back, and we had four public speakers that identified. Did we hear those?
I think first we need a staff report.
Oh, I think I did introduce the item already and indicated. But we had no additional comments. There were no changes since the last reading, which was June 26th. And this ordinance is the second reading, which would be the second and final reading. Should the council take action to approve today, the ordinance would go into effect in 30 days. And there were, again, no changes since the last action, and it would prohibit short-term rentals in all zoning districts within the city. Our planning managers here, should there be any questions during the course of the public hearing?
Okay, thank you. Okay, speakers?
Okay, we have four speakers. Mort Israel.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. I am in favor of the ordinance to ban short-term rentals here in Villa Park. For the primary reason that Villa Park is a community. I've been here, resident of Villa Park, for 30 years, and Villa Park has always been known as a community of stable, single-family homes, community where everybody shares the same values and basically wants a safe, friendly environment for raising their children. Now, short-term rentals, I've been told, and the ordinance to prevent short-term rentals, is a solution searching for a problem. Well, the problem is what does Villa Park represent? Why do we live in Villa Park? Are we here because it just happens to be a convenient place between the ocean and the mountains? Is it convenient because it's near Knott's Berry Farm and Disneyland? Are we here because we appreciate the strong sense of community we have with no sidewalks, no streetlights, a sense of a rural atmosphere in the midst of this great metropolitan area? And although short-term rentals may not pose immediately a safety problem, a noise problem, or any other problem, it does represent a problem in what this city represents and what this city means to the residents who have lived here for all these many years. Do we want a transitory-type community? Do we want investors and entrepreneurs to determine the city planning of Villa Park? Or do we want the citizens to be able to speak to the city council and preserve what Villa Park has meant for all these many years? So that if you're looking for specific complaints about short-term rentals, there probably aren't any. But how it affects our community, how it affects our residents, how it affects our feeling of well-being living in Villa Park, and how the city's future will be determined, whether it's determined by those affluent few who have deep pockets to be able to force their will through litigation perhaps? Or are you listening to the community members, the people who have lived here all their lives, raised their children, and who move in here wanting to raise their children? Who do you represent? And that's basically what I have to say. So please support the resolution and vote for elimination of short-term rentals here in Villa Park. Thank you.
Mr. Israel, could you please tell us your address?
My address is 1-8901 Patrician Drive in Villa Park. I live, as I've been told, on a problem street. And I do have a short-term rental across the street from me, which I must admit has been, for me, unobtrusive and not causing any problems. But when you change the character of your street, when you change the character of your neighborhood, that's a problem for all of us here in Villa Park.
Thanks, sir. I have a question. How long has that house been operated as a short-term rental?
Probably about six months or a year, probably six months a year. And that house, I might add, was built specifically. It's not as if it's my house, and I'm retiring with my wife, and we're turning into a short-term rental. That house was built specifically for short-term rentals.
Is that a short-term rental, does that accommodate one group, or does it accommodate multiple groups?
It can accommodate multiple groups, and it is unusual to have about 10 to 15 people occupying that home. And as I mentioned, both to Councilwoman Fasenelli and to Mayor, that even though they're just living life, enjoying Southern California hospitality or the Southern California living style, when you have 10 to 15 people outside in the pool talking, it creates quite a noise level. So despite the fact that they're just doing ordinary things, it can create a bit of a problem for the neighbors.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Naomi Horio, who lives on Henderson Way in Villa Park.
Good evening. As you guys all know, I'm the problem child with the big storm pipe. So let me start off by telling you that I was quite hesitant about speaking today because I didn't want any type of retaliation occurring now that you have granted me some relief in moving forward with the storm pipe being fixed. But I did want to speak up. I am one of the children that grew up here in Villa Park. I came here in 1967. I went to elementary school here. I went to junior high, and I graduated as a Spartan. So I realized that we do want to keep it rural. One of my projects as a high school senior was to go around, and I went to probably 50 houses, asking all the residents if they would put in sidewalks and streetlights for the safety of us children. And the residents said, no, we want to keep it rural. And yet, I look today as a grown-up coming back home and living in the house that I, the last house that I lived in, which is in Henderson Way. And I do see changes. I see the stoplight on Lemon that looks like a Las Vegas light. Okay, so there are changes that are being made in Villa Park. And that is not a rural sense of a flashing red light at that stop sign. So there are changes being made in Villa Park. I'm here because I am one of the designated Airbnb homes. All of you council members have been on my site, looking at the storm pipes, and probably have never realized that I was doing it. I am living in my home when those residents that come in and stay at my house, I take the same risk. I know, Mayor Calacot, you talked about knife-wielding, gun-swinging people that could come to these homes, but I take that risk inside my own home as well. So as an operating Airbnb guest, how many of you know, or haven't even thought, that Airbnb actually that Airbnb actually does background checks on both their guests as well as their hosts? They also do global screening on the guests that come into your home. As a host, I can turn away anybody that I do not feel safe or have the gut feeling that something's not going to go right. I don't have parties inside my house. It's regulated in my home where I only have a maximum of six people. I realize that many of the people here are upset because of that house on Patrician. And for me, too, I think that I would be sitting here also with them if there was a house across the street that was holding 26 people and having ginormous parties. But I'm in the category where I am a STR, as an owner-occupied STR, where there's a lot more control and share the risk. I think you should take a look, in my opinion, at seeing the two different categories of owner-occupied and non-owner-occupied STRs. And as I had researched myself in Anaheim, they had created some restrictions of, example, limiting the number of guests, setting quiet hours of 10 to 9, and requiring owners or reps to respond to complaints or issues on the property within 45 minutes. I ask that the council members here take a look and see that maybe there could be a medium between here, a compromise, for those that are doing the STRs. For me, it is a little bit of income. I don't do it as a main source of business. I do it because I love meeting people. My guests have come from China, from Germany, from Switzerland, from Venezuela, from the Philippines. I have met great people. These are people like you and me that are traveling the world, and they are well-behaved. I have never had any issues with any of my guests. But again, I don't have massive amounts of people. If you look at my history, it's I'm hosting guests on the average, usually three weekends out of the month. Sometimes they stay longer, but most of them are here because they're visiting Disneyland. They're going to a concert. They're not here to party at my house. I think this is pretty much what I wanted to kind of share, experiencing as an actual true Airbnb host. Everybody else is speculating, and I've been reading all the other informations of what other people have said and what could have happened. But I'm like a living proof of actually doing it and knowing Airbnb. Again, there are other sites. You know, I haven't been identified as one of the three, but I am sure there are many more in Villa Park that are doing STRs. You just don't know. They're on Expedia.com, HomeAway, Vermo, Booking.com. You can list on Craigslist. There's so many places where you can actually be promoting your facility and renting. And yet, again, there are no reports. So I feel that our community here in Villa Park, we respect our neighbors. We respect the community. And we want to take care of those around us. So I think if there are any issues, we would take care of each other. That's it. Thank you so much.
Any questions? Next speaker?
Our next speaker is Mr. David Perez, who lives on North Dustin in Anaheim.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and city members. My name's David Perez, and I'm here to oppose the ban for short-term rentals. I manage a property here in Villa Park. The property is owned by Ken and Tina Starr. They are owners of The Home Comfort USA, well-known local business serving residents of Orange County since 2011. The purpose of this speech is to, of course, appeal and reconsider the existing proposal of the ban of short-term rentals here in Villa Park. One of the reasons that Ken and Tina chose Villa Park as a city to live in and raise their children is because of the love for Orange County and the community and the desire to share the beauty and the amenities of the city of Southern California areas with others. This desire to be hospitable comes from their deep faith and passion to serve. They have a desire to support local nonprofit organizations through their business and have made that a top priority. They always have, they use their house to welcome guests and bless others. When they decided to begin this utilizing the home as a vacation home rental, their hearts was to be able to bless other families that were traveling in the area. I guess you could say they're proud of the city that they live in and they want to share their experience with others. If short-term rentals are banned here in Villa Park, I feel that families will miss out on the wonderful experience. Ken and Tina love it when the families stay in their home and have a chance to bond and retreat with each other and relieve the pressures from their lives. Don't you agree that that's a good support? Please consider that we are very selective on who we have and who we allow at the property. We have a very strict policy against any parties of any kind. We demand that the guests are respectful and the neighbors, and keep things peaceful at all times. I respectfully appeal to you to not take away what is a good thing for the city and those visiting and staying at our house. Please take a closer look at what we are trying to do here and why we are doing it. I greatly appreciate your consideration. And I'd like to share a testimony from our past guest. Lisa, this was such a great experience from start to finish. We had stayed in a lot of Airbnbs and vacation homes, and this was outstanding. First of all, it was so easy to check in and get comfortable. Tina and David left a beautiful box of California goodies for us to enjoy and left toiletry in case anything was left home. This was so helpful. In addition, they had remembered that it was my daughter's birthday and left some decorations and a birthday card. The house was beautiful, very clean, lots of extras. Was perfect layout for a family, super close to whatever you needed to do, super easy to get to Newport Beach, where we needed to go every day. Tina and David responded immediately with any questions and requests we had. He even responded at being out of the country. I can't see enough about this experience. After all the years of traveling to different places, this house, because of the owner and all the special extras, this one stands out the most in our minds. The kids absolutely loved it and loved the beautiful pool and play area that we have. Thank you so much, and we hope to be back soon one day.
Couple of questions.
Sure.
How long has this business been operating?
Since May.
Since May?
Mm-hmm.
And how many does it sleep?
14.
14.
So nine, well, nine beds.
And do Ken and Tina still live in the city of Villa Park?
Correct.
And do they still live at that same house?
Correct.
Thank you.
Are you sure on that? My understanding is they live in Hawaii?
They live in both areas, both.
I've not seen the star, I live on that street. I've not seen the stars in at least a couple of years. They have not resided in that house for probably three years.
They were just here.
Because it was remodeled.
They were just here last week.
They've actually signed petitions for you, Bob, in the city that you've taken around for the no parking. So they were, they must, they must have been here during the no parking, and that's with, that's within the time because they, we have record of that.
That's about four years ago.
Well, I have the record of that, so.
Yeah, and the records will show that it was at least four years ago, before I was elected.
Well, that, I don't think that's our place to see if they live here. That home is beautiful, by the way. I did look it up. Regardless of what's going on, they did a nice job. And they do live next door to a family with children that we've never heard about. It's on the top of Feather Hill. And I don't believe you knew that was a short-term rental.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? Any other speakers?
Yes, our next speaker is Christine.
Shacter.
Shacter. And she has asked that we distribute a copy of a memo that we previously received, and I will distribute that to the council.
Great. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. As mentioned, my name is Christine Shacter with the Pacific West Association of Realtors. Instead of reading our letter this evening, I thought it'd be best to talk more about our organization and what we do. However, first, I wanted to touch on just a couple of points I heard before coming up here. Thank you to all the other speakers. I know it's a tough issue. We're not here to say we are against regulation. We are certainly believe that the vibrancy of the community as well as the safety of the members of the community are first and foremost to any healthy community where realtors are interacting, and especially with 5% of the population who are only renters. That's such an anomaly to the larger Southern California region that we do appreciate the residential character of the neighborhood and upkeeping that. So we're not necessarily against regulations. We think that, as mentioned, could be a great solution, just not necessarily for a ban outright without having the statistics or data or understanding the issue first. I know there was mention of sober living homes. Unfortunately, as you all well know, that's something that can't be regulated at local levels due to Americans with Disabilities Act. And so even when you come into an issue with, you have, what's that? You can't, you can't regulate. No, I know that's not the issue, but I heard that mentioned before. And so you look at issues very comparable. If you have a certain number of people, that can always feed into a nuisance complaint. So there's other things you can work with code enforcement to deal with. So before an outright ban, looking at other measures to get there. And if you're going based on Nextdoor.com, I don't know if some of those are the complaints. You know, you would presume wildlife is living in some of these houses because you can never trust Nextdoor.com or any of the other sources out there necessarily. Maybe you're looking at me like that's not true, but sometimes you all want to verify the information. And then, so I wanted to speak more to our organization and what we do. Locally, we serve nearly 12,000 Realtor members across the jurisdiction that serves more than 2.6 million residents across two counties and nearly 30 cities. Today, the California Association of Realtors includes more than 100 local member associations and more than 170,000 Realtors, Realtor associates, and affiliate members who abide by a rigid code of professional ethics. The association became the largest trade association in the United States in the early 1970s with over 400,000 members. Today, the National Association of Realtors has over 1.1 million members, 54 state associations, and more than 1,300 local, 1,300 local associations, of which we are a member. We are a trade association dedicated to the advancement of professionalism in real estate and develops and promotes programs and services that will enhance the members' freedom and ability to conduct their individual businesses successfully with integrity and competency and through collective action, promotes the preservation of property rights. Furthermore, our local advocacy work supports housing, real estate, private property rights, and other Realtor issues in Washington, D.C., Sacramento, and in city and county governments throughout California. We have helped our local Realtors defeat and avoid a number of policies such as restrictions and fees for open house signs, rent control, and just cause eviction, transfer taxes, and point-of-sale retrofits. We assist our members in a variety of ways, including community and public affairs outreach, public policy development, media relations, strong community relations with local officials and staff, building coalitions with allied industries. The Realtor Party is a powerful alliance of Realtors and Realtor associations working to protect and promote homeownership and private investment in property. The Realtor Party speaks with one voice to advance candidates that build strong communities and promote a vibrant business environment. The Realtor Party is effective at all levels of government because of its grassroots strength. That strength exhibited in advocacy as well as community involvement works hand-in-hand with Realtors Political Action Committee. Through homeownership education and consumer calls for action, state and local association, consumer content, the homeownershipmatters resource, and the Consumer Advocacy Outreach Program, we offer brokers and agents a comprehensive way to educate and engage consumers on homeownership-related public policy issues at the state, local, and national levels. In Villa Park, as you are well aware. Your time? Okay. Has 5% renters in the entire city, with our territory average being 43%, and for the state, 46%. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes?
Yeah. You talked about your political action committee. Could you tell us how that works?
Sure. Our members give locally, and then we work with the state to fund candidates who are both for and against our causes as well as issue mobilization, which we call impact funds, for issues throughout the region that we represent. And so, again, mentioned, you know, rent control being a hot topic issue along with inclusionary zoning, fighting those issues. But something as sign ordinance is, is something that we deal with. So again, it's working with the community through our local legislative body and those candidates and those individuals who speak to those policies.
So in other words, you support candidates that protect property rights? And how do you support them?
Absolutely. Financial contributions through both direct contributions and independent expenditures as well.
What do you do about those that don't protect property rights? Those local officials?
Well, certainly, we come out in opposition to that. That's why we're here, is to really talk about private property rights and wanting to protect those as homeownership is a key value, and it's something that we're here to represent.
How do you do that? The same way you do this with support?
Absolutely correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, wait a minute, one more question. So how many people on this city council do you contribute to their campaign?
It depends on the issues and the races. Like I said, we have nearly 30 cities that we represent.
Are there any benefactors sitting on this council today as a result of your group?
Who's, I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Are there any benefactors sitting on this council today that are benefactors of campaign contributions from your group?
I can answer that question. Christine can answer that question. But she wasn't there when it happened.
I wasn't there for that. I can't submit to it.
They supported me. And what they supported, other councils in Villa Park, and many of them that I recommended they would, that supported candidates over the years.
I understand you're voting now.
Bill, are you the only candidate here that they have contributed to, that you're aware of? That is sitting on this dais?
No. They supported, they supported my campaign.
So they also supported you?
They did. But I'm.
How much money did they give, either of you?
I don't recall a specific amount. Do you?
Do you know, Bill?
Oh, they gave me $5,000.
It was much less than that.
I believe they gave you $1,500.
Yeah, thank you.
But I was, but I'm not sure about what organization it was. I just knew it was a real estate association.
Thank you.
So $5,000, and also $1,500, too.
Thank you.
I've received zero, for the record.
Me, too.
Okay, is there any further discussion?
No.
That concludes the speakers, so we go back to the council for comments.
So, yes, and so there's no further discussion?
I have, I have some discussion.
Yes.
I want to thank everyone for coming out regardless of what side you're on. I have met with two of the speakers. I've met with Mr. Israel. I've also met with Naomi. I've received several letters on this, and it's certainly... It disturbs me that this council made a mountain out of a molehill. I feel it was more of a witch hunt that we received what was a complaint that turned out not to be a complaint. And since then, we have now dug into the files, and we've looked up every website, and we're looking up Airbnbs, and we're looking up who owns them and whether or not they lived here. And that's just not what we're made of. We don't go looking for trouble. But regardless, I don't want to rehash what we did last time. But I think what we have here is we do have existing businesses, and I'm going to call them businesses because that's what they are. But we have a lot of businesses in Villa Park. We have plumbers who work out of their house. We have masseuses who work out of their house. We have a lot of stuff here that no one knows about because they mind their own business. But since we know, and this council has known about people renting their homes, one of them was a speaker today because we were on her property a year and a half ago when it was raining and storming. We knew at that time that she operated an Airbnb, and we didn't think anything about it. But I think we have a duty here to allow those people to continue their business in some sort of a grandfathering arena and have some sort of a compromise here. I wish not to, you know, I don't wish to take property rights from anybody because I think that in four months, we have already restricted our homeowners from renting a secondary unit, which is not what we moved in here for. One of the, why do we live in Villa Park? I live in Villa Park because I can rent my home, because I can paint my house yellow, because I can actually plant dandelions in my front yard, and I don't have a homeowners association that says I can't. But we're at an impasse here, and I think that we should allow the people who have continued, you know, have their business, allow them to make their income for a certain number of years, such as the other cities have done. And at that time, we can curb it. The other cities have done that. I believe Anaheim is one of them. There may be more. There might be some research that needs to be done here, but we were not provided with any of that data when we passed this ordinance. This is something we've learned since then. So having an ordinance, which is the law, come here and for us to change the entire makeup of the city without research being given to this council, we need to deal with what we're. we have here. And I would support changing the ordinance as it's written to allow the current Airbnbs to recoup the investment that they have. And at that time, we can make Airbnbs or short-term rentals, whatever you want to call them, obsolete in the city. Those are my comments.
Any other comments?
Yes. Steve, please. I'd like this to go on the record and I'd like it to be shared. I'm going to respectfully disagree with Councilwoman Fasenelli in that there is a lot of information out there at our disposal to review with regards to problems and issues that short-term rentals cause in various cities. It's not necessarily about someone making noise, someone having a loud party. There are other financial and significant impacts to the community outside of noise and nuisance that take place as a result of allowing short-term rentals to continue. And these are businesses, to your point. These are businesses that do not subscribe to the residential nature of this community. And if we do, in fact, I mean, I moved here, and when I was campaigning, all I heard was keep Villa Park the way it is. And if we allow short-term rentals to continue to grow, it's not only going to have noise and those kinds of impacts on our neighborhood, it's going to have financial implications for all you homeowners, serious in some regards. And if those of you that want to rent at some point in time, you won't be able to because you'll be priced out of the market. So, while there's white papers and so forth, if the real estate association is peddling for us to look at, there's also counter to that as well. And I encourage every one of you to educate yourselves on this problem. And it's not just Villa Park, but there's many, many, many cities that are having this issue. And we're not the first that have come up and prohibited it. So, my whole thing is not about an email that somebody said somebody was, you know, called the sheriff because there was a ruckus going on in the backyard. You read some of these things that I've read, and I've done quite a bit of research in the last 30 days. I've read white paper after white paper after white paper, and I've looked at the ones that both sides have produced. But this, these things make sense to me from the standpoint of continuing to keep our community the way it is long-term. And that's why I'm supportive of it. Thank you.
I have a comment.
Vince has a-
Oh, go ahead, Vince.
Thank you. As the quote-unquote impetus behind this, or at least at the behest of our residents, I brought this to our city manager's attention based upon complaints, discussed it with him at length, found out that other cities were having similar issues, discussed this with Councilmember Pitts, who graciously took a look at this issue, had heard similar issues, and did his own research and came to his own conclusion that this is an inconsistent, incompatible, commercial use, a business in a residential community. And I don't know about you, but I can guarantee you that you're not going to want to raise your family next to a hotel. I can guarantee most folks, most residents that live in the city are not going to want to retire next to a hotel, even well-run hotels, even conscientious entrepreneurs, because that's what most of these folks are. They don't live here. They may maintain residency, but they don't live here. Naomi, I think, is an exception, not the rule. And I appreciate her words, and I appreciate everybody coming here and sharing their testimony with us. And the emails, many of which were against short-term rentals and for this ordinance, those are the ones that I received. And I'm thankful for the staff's research and looking at other cities and how that they've addressed this issue, and they are growing. They're looking at this issue as a blight, in a sense. It's not adding a benefit. It's artificially injecting something in a residential community that should not be I think Councilmember Pitts raised some fantastic comments. I appreciate Councilwoman Fasenelli's concerns about property rights, but I think the facts, frankly, are just different. I think the opinions in our community are just different. I think if you look back at the minutes, the city only recently became aware of this And the fact that we let something go on is just not the case. Our code has been silent on this, and these entrepreneurs and business owners have tried to run under the radar, which is intelligent. But when you house 22 people, which some advertise that they will sleep, 22 people, we have another bit of testimony, 14 people, and you have almost like a conference room by the pool, of course, that noise is going to spill over. And is it something that you can enforce a code against? Is it, is it really something that Sheriff's Department can do anything against as far as a disturbing the peace call or our very limited code enforcement staff? It's extremely difficult. Does it affect the lives of the homeowners that surround those properties? Absolutely. Common sense tells us that. The way that we deal with this issue is to take a look at it. Is this in the best interest of all of our residents? Or is, or are short-term rentals in the best interest of a few investors? I think the answer is obvious. And I appreciate my colleagues' words of support for property values and property rights, but I think they're frankly skewed. I think they support a special interest, a special interest that supported me. And I hope I don't lose their support, but if I do, I do. I'm in lockstep with them 90, 95% of the time. And if they choose to not support me, that's fine. Nobody can buy my vote. And I'm not saying anybody is buying any votes here, but I'm just saying, I'm going to speak my conscience because I speak for you. I don't speak for special interests. I'm going to leave it at that.
Well, first of all, you all know that I'm against taking private property rights, particularly when Councilman Rossini talks about all the problems here, particularly when you haven't done any survey. You don't know what the people of Villa Park think about this. There's no survey of the people of Villa Park. You talk to two or three people, and you find out what they are, but that doesn't represent the entire community. First of all, by passing this ordinance, you're implicitly recognizing that short-term rentals were allowed previously. Isn't that correct?
No.
If you pass an ordinance that says you prohibit them, you're saying you allowed them. If you allowed them, then you have to allow the existing ones to be a non-conforming use.
I disagree with you, and so does our city attorney. They've been trying to fly it under the radar.
But he says that they're not included in the code. But if you're passing something prohibiting them, that to me tells that you allowed them before.
Addressing them.
Okay, all right. But my other concern is that this is going to open up the city to tremendous litigation and expensive litigation. And I don't think some of these, some of these short-term rental owners are going to back down. I don't believe it. That's my, that's my two cents, that you're just really in the city a lot of liability and not accomplishing anything.
Okay. I guess it's finally my turn to speak. The city has long regulated property usage. This is nothing new. It's a matter of maintaining the character of our community. For example, in our commercial zone, the city does not allow massage parlors, lawnmower repair shops, and other operations inconsistent with our community. Those are legal activities, but they're prohibited because we are trying to maintain the character of our community. We don't have massage parlors here. In our residential zones, certainly, the city does allow sober living homes and group care facilities and treatment facilities, but that's in compliance with state mandates. However, a couple of years ago, this very council denied expansion of a daycare facility to a state-licensed daycare facility, which means allows them to have more than six children there at one time, noting that the impacts of doing so would be inconsistent with our residential character. Again, we were trying to maintain the character of our community, trying to, you know, limit the amount of traffic. Certainly, you know, a allowed usage was okay, but trying to expand it to an incompatible use was not. I'd like to ask a question of staff. What's the difference between a short-term rental and a motel six? In both cases, you've got, you're allowed, you know, in one instance, we have multiple rooms. We have people coming and paying by the day. What's the difference? It's both commercial activities. We've got non-resident owners. We've got hired managers that do not live in those facilities. What's the difference between a short-term rental and a motel six, except for the number of rooms?
Price.
Pardon?
The price.
Yeah, the price, certainly. I don't see any. And I don't, I don't think any of us in Villa Park bought with the idea that, hey, I'm going to, you know, at some, at some future time, I'm going to be living next to a motel, and that's what these are. Now, honestly, you know, to be honest, I've rented condos up in Mammoth, but in that area, that's, those communities, those neighborhoods are, you know, transitory areas. We're a very stable residential community. And this is, you know, short-term rentals, people coming and going by the day, is just not consistent with what our community has always been. We've, we were incorporated 56 years ago to be a semi-rural, quiet, peaceful place to raise our families, not, and not someplace for, you know, building small boutique motels. We've also seen other communities actively prohibit. We can learn by the experiences of other communities like Anaheim, San Clemente, and others where they've experienced, tried to experiment with short-term rentals. It's not worked. The neighbors have, the residents have complained, and they've backpedaled on those programs. I'd like to point out, you know, that this is, that the short-term rental idea is a relatively recent phenomenon, just from what we've heard today. The facility in Patrion, the resident said that it's only been operating for maybe six months to a year. The Star Residence has only been operating since May. This is a relatively recent phenomenon, so now's a good time to say, okay, no, this is not something we accept in our community, and move on. Now, that will, you know, prevent future misunderstandings with people that buy homes, that think to buy homes with the idea of turning them into short-term rentals. No, that's not consistent with what our community wants to be viewed as. So, anyway, that's my two cents worth, and I'll entertain a motion at this point.
I'd like to move the ordinance as stated.
Second.
I'd like to support the motion, but I'd like to make a couple of minor changes, amendments. I'd like to delay the effective date of the ordinance a few months to give the, certainly, people that have short-term rentals may have bookings into the future. So, maybe, maybe six months or whatever the maker and seconder of the motion think would be appropriate.
For the record, any changes at this time to the ordinance would constitute reversion back to the first reading, which we would have to then go back and have a second reading and a subsequent council meeting. So, any changes to the wording or to the elements of that ordinance would, in fact, put us to, back to step one.
Then, strike my proposed revisions, amendments.
Well, that's interesting, Bob. If you, if you believe that that, that you wanted to give six months, what's another, what's another month here? I mean, I'm asking you, you want to make that motion because you want to give those people who own it six months to continue their income and make accommodations? What's another 30 days?
There will be opportunity. How long is it before the ordinance goes into effect?
Should, if the council takes affirmative action today to approve as-is with no changes, it would go into effect 30 days from today.
Okay.
On the date of adoption. If the council were to say, "We want to make a longer term, six months like you suggested," that wording would be reincorporated into the wording. We would return to the council at the subsequent council meeting in August, and then it would take effect 30 days from that point, in which case, there would be 30 days plus the six months.
Okay. I'm only asking on the motion that has been made and seconded, which I'm supporting. So, my question was just, when does the, when would the ordinance, as moved and seconded, be effective, if you said 30 days? So, the, there's been, this has been on the agenda for two meetings now, so there's been some public notice already that we're considering this, and we'll have 30 additional days to comply.
Please, Ben, a first and a second. I have some, I have a question for the attorneys. If this passes as the motion is, can you tell us the next step and in the enforcement and how we're going to enforce the ordinance and what we're going to do? So, if this does pass, which it most likely will, we should not be passing ordinances if we're not enforcing it. So, city manager, what are we going to do in 30 days when this passes? Because if we're not going to enforce it, there's no reason for us to have been here.
It's, I was hired, and it's my responsibility to enforce the ordinances of the city. So, it would be my duty through code enforcement where we know of those instances where there are violations, to go through an administrative process to initiate compliance, if you will. Should there not be compliance, there's a number of opportunities, some of which would involve either an administrative citation process and/or a potential prosecution, if you will. And I'll let the city attorney go into the detail what that would be, but that would have to be done with the direction of the council. At this point, we do have in the books and municipal code an administrative process to move forward on both of those avenues, and we would have to seek some council direction on which they would want us to pursue.
Okay. So, two months ago, though, we passed an ordinance that you could not rent your second dwelling unit, and we have not sent one letter out to tell our residents that they're operating illegally. So, we passed an ordinance and we didn't enforce it, and it's only been 60 days. So, that tells me that we're not going to do it this time. So, I'm trying to find out, are we picking and choosing what ordinances that are we enforcing? Because we shouldn't be making ordinances if we're not going to enforce them. So...
Mr. Mayor, call the question.
No. I have, I'm not done with my discussion here. An ordinance is a law, and I'd like to know in 30 days, our cease and desist notice is going to go out to at least one resident who's sitting here, the other resident who does live here? Are they going to go out?
We would process forward with respect to your previous thing about the accessory dwelling units. We've only recently compiled a listing of all the accessory dwelling units. We are in the process of composing letters to go out to those indicating this was a new law approved by, a new ordinance approved, and that would happen, we're running that through the city attorney because there are some repercussions about non-compliance.
Sure. So, you know, the general axiom is that people are supposed to know what the law is, and ignorance of the law is no defense. So, that's matter number one. As far as enforcement of code enforcement, so, the city doesn't have to proactively tell everybody, "Okay, here's a new law." I mean, this is the telling of the people, right?
That's correct. But the history of Villa Park has been that we have been very friendly. And when we want to put a stop sign up, we go and we tell everyone in the neighborhood. We give them 60 days, we're going to put the stop sign up. In this case, we didn't tell them. But we need to do code enforcement if we think that this is a bad idea.
Right. So, you know, and historically, and you all know this, I mean, generally, code enforcement within the city is on a complaint basis, right? We don't actively go out and look for violations until they come to us. I mean, in certain situations here, we know, you know, people, where some STRs are, so it would be likely that we would enforce against those. Now, as to your earlier section, I mean, the city manager went through some of the items. I mean, there are, you know, panoply of different things the city can do to enforce laws. You have administrative citations. A violation of the municipal code is a nuisance under the law, so there can be a civil action to stop, you know, prohibit the illegal use. And there's, you know, potential criminal actions that could be taken, which would require, you know, a city council authorization prior to doing that. So, what will exactly be done as to each issue? I mean, those are the options for the city to decide in the future.
One of the requests from a councilman was that he wanted the ones that we know of right now to be identified in those minutes. Is that going to be possible?
To the extent that we know of them, we've identified, we believe, up to seven now. But we have not been tasked with, you know, now, you know, we move forward on, there's a number of vehicles. Let me just say, as identified by one of the speakers, these are not something that, they're not required to have a business license, so that we don't know. There's over 2,000 residences in the city. There may be many more that we don't know about that are operating in this way or not. So, we- So, we have reacted on a, we do code enforcement in a reactive process, like the city attorney says. We would have to start identifying it. Those cities that have moved to these types of things have spent a lot of time researching on a proactive basis, you know, monitoring websites, those types of things. That's not typically the types of activities that we do in the city with our small staff.
And we haven't done that, but since we have identified eight of them, I would expect that eight notices would go out within the next 30 days prohibiting them having a short-term rental, since we've spent two months and a lot of discussions. So I would expect that to happen, and I will be monitoring it to make sure it happens.
We're past the public comment period.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to call the question. I appreciate Councilwoman's support now, apparently, for the enforcement of the ordinance, and yet she's voting against it.
Okay. The question has been called on a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance prohibiting short-term rentals.
Point of order, point of order, Mayor. When we call for the question, shouldn't you vote on that? Doesn't mean just you call for the vote, does it?
That is, apologize, Mayor, that is technically correct. That is a motion for which you vote.
Okay.
It's not one just that...
Okay, so we've got a motion to vote on this item. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Please vote on whether to call for the question.
That passes with a three to two vote, with the nose being Councilwoman Fasenelli and Councilwoman Nelson. So now we would vote on the item.
Okay, so now we will vote on the ordinance. Please vote.
I'm lost. What did we vote on?
You voted to call the question. You voted to vote on the, as a point of technicality, you voted to whether or not you were calling the question.
Oh, my gosh, that's something new, too. Okay. All right. We've never done that either before.
Okay.
Fair, fair.
So, we're now...
Somebody's pulling...
We're now voting on the ordinance, the adoption of the ordinance?
Can we read, can we read the title, please, so I know what we're doing?
We are, we are voting on, I believe it was Mayor Protem's, I forget who made the motion.
Correct. I made, I made the motion.
Tem's motion, and seconded by Councilman Pitts.
Right.
Please vote.
And that would be to approve the second and final reading of the ordinance 2018-612, prohibiting short-term rentals in all zoning districts of the city, as presented in the report to the council in item number two, public hearing, item number two. That's the vote, right?
Why we did the first one?
As a point of order, when, when, when he, when Councilman Nelson has read his rulebook, and basically says that when you call the question, you have to vote on whether you call the question.
Exactly. Not just you call the question, right?
Okay.
I thought if I confuse them enough, maybe they'll vote wrong.
You got them on that.
You did a good job with me!
So, are we voting?
Okay.
They voted?
We did vote. So we voted on the second?
Yes.
This is the adoption of the ordinance?
This is the adoption, so it passes by a three to two vote, with Councilman Nelson and Councilwoman Fasenelli voting in opposition. So the item passes.
Okay, thank you. Now we will consider the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered routine and are usually enacted by one motion approving the recommended action listed on the agenda. Any member of the city council staff or the public may request an item be removed from the consent calendar for discussion or separate action. Council members, are there any items you would like to remove from the consent calendar?
Yes.
I'd like to pull three.
Three? Any others?
Yes, number five, please.
Okay, items three and five have been removed from the consent calendar.
I'll move the remainder of the items.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. Please vote.
That passes by a five zero vote.
Okay, the first item removed from the consent calendar is item number three, warrants and dispersments from June 12, 2018, through July 16, 2018.
This is a, I have a question for Mr. Davies. We have a, there's a warrant, which is numbered, it's a check over to the Villa Park Community Service Foundation for $6,653. What does that represent?
I can answer that as the, see, we, for a trash contract, we receive monies from the trash contract that goes for community purposes. That contract is then transferred, those monies, by the council, subsequent direction, prior direction, to give that to the foundation for purposes of community activities. So it's part of our contract, our trash contract, that we receive monies from...
And I'm aware that, and specifically in the contract, it says that the money's going to be donated to the Community Service Foundation. Why do they write it to the city instead of directly to the foundation?
That's because it's a process that the hauler has indicated that they pursue in compliance with their contract. Their contract was with us, is not the Community Foundation. So they've asked that, they sent the contract as, we've asked them repeatedly, send it directly, but they feel their contract is with us to fulfill the obligation.
Yeah, because I've read the contract, and it's supposed to be payable to the foundations, and we do this little transaction every year.
They believe that the contract requires they pay it through to us.
So when they pay it to us, it's not deductible to them, so they don't really care when they pay it to the city, because it's not going to the nonprofit. They don't care.
It's a business deduction. I mean...
Yeah, like they care.
Either way, they get it anyway.
So, actually, that's a very nice, that is a very, it's something that we should acknowledge to the public, that part of your trash fees, they do give a percentage back to the foundation every year, and this is a nice, this is a nice check. That's $6,600 that they give to our foundation. So that's a good chunk of change, considering that membership is down, so that's wonderful.
Plus the dirt they give us, too, and all those things they do for us.
Yeah, so they do give back quite a bit. Thank you. I move, I will move it with that answer. Thank you.
There's been a motion?
Second.
A second? Any discussion? Okay, please vote.
That passes by a five zero vote.
Okay. The next item is consent calendar, item number five, request approval of city council meetings of June 5, 2018.
I ask that to be pulled. I was not present for that meeting, so I cannot vote to approve or disapprove.
Okay.
Technically, you can vote. All you have to do is, if you are able to read the minutes, you can vote that that's what they say. You don't have to be present to vote on the minutes.
I just prefer...
Isn't that correct?
That's your preference.
People go different ways on that. People do say, if you read the minutes and approve them, and that they're consistent with the tape or whatever, that you can vote. But frankly, most people do abstain in this situation, but technically, they could.
I concur, Robbie. Good call.
Okay. So, is there a motion to approve item number five?
I'll move it.
Second.
Nice. There's been a motion and a second. Please vote.
That passes by a four zero vote with an abstention from Councilman Pitts.
You hit the A button.
We're up to speed.
Now we'll move on to new business. Our first item of new business is the Commercial Organics Recycling Program with Republic Services. Staff, please provide your report.
Okay, this item is a, you recall, on January of 2012, the city entered agreement with Republic Waste Services for waste hauling, solid waste handling agreement. That agreement, subsequent to that agreement, the state passed a mandatory organics recycling program through Assembly Bill 1826. In 1826, there are, there are imposition of various programs that did not start till 2016, but basically, there's a level of increasing tiers of mandated participation running through 2020. The agreement that we originally had with Republic contemplated this new legislation and a new requirement. So, we have basically, in the agreement, the ability to implement a new program. We have implemented the program in consultation with Republic, consistent with state law. As, under the terms of the contract, I have the administrative ability to implement that. It is a voluntary organics program that is only, people only participate if they want to participate in it. And there is a fee associated with that if they are charged, or they are set up. So, I have moved forward on that. We had to comply with state mandates, so we're moving forward. We have to report to Cal Recycle that we've done such, and that process is going on. So this basically is a receive-and-file item, just to make you aware and be very transparent that we have been, we are in compliance with AB 826, 1826, and we have subsequently reported to Cal Recycle that we are doing such. So, it is a receive-and-file, and I don't believe any action is required by the council.
Not, I mean, often councils will vote to receive-and-file, but no official approval action needed.
Are they going to give me a new composter? I know that. Does it extend to residential?
At this point, it does not.
Not yet.
Not yet. It will be, there's tiers, again. We may get down the road by January of 2020. Our recycling business may look very different, as it does right now.
And we all know the path of regulation in California.
Yes. Yeah, ultimately, the objective is to particularly take food waste produced by restaurants and other food establishments, and forward it to the Orange County Sanitation District in this area, and add that organic waste to the digesters. Basically, it'll be put to good use, generating methane to produce electricity, and also produce compost that will be used to grow crops.
And the businesses have other options to participate. They can, they can give to the various nonprofits that provide services, et cetera. So many of the businesses that would qualify for these services already dispose of their businesses. For instance, Ralph does, Ralph's does their own recycling program, so they're exempt, they don't need to participate. But we have to, we're required by law to have a program in the city, so that's, in fact, what we're doing.
Okay, so is there a...
Public comment.
Public comment? Okay, the recommendation in the agenda says to the city council ratify the attached exhibit one.
I thought you said receipt file.
It's a receipt and file at this point.
It's a receipt and file. You don't have to...
Okay. So, receipt and file, no action needed. Okay, the next item of new business is the contract with Brea IT for information technology services. Please provide the staff report.
As you recall, during the budget process, one of the things we indicated that our current provider was outsourcing their call-desking out overseas, and it would have been additional subsequent, if we would want to keep the services local, it would have required us to increase our costs. So we started shopping around and looking at various services. Brea IT is a service that we were very comfortable with. We identified this during our budget that was item. So this would put us into a contract with them for 2,400 a month, which allows us to have onsite IT support, as you're well aware, with streaming and those types of things. Those are things that come up, and we don't have the ability right now to have onsite. So this will transition us over, and with the implementations of some of our new IT programs, this is a big step forward, we believe, that we recommend approval.
Any discussion?
I, just one question. I've heard a lot of complaints in the past about our website and various different, whether it's iPhone, or iPad, or Droid, or different types of technology using our website. Are they going to significantly address some of those issues? And have they, or I should say, have they, and are they going to with this?
That's one of the initial things we asked for, was an initial assessment. Not only, you know, some of it is the equipment that we're transmitting on, and the bandwidth and things that we're basically using here. So, a lot of the services, we've asked for an assessment to come in and say where we need to upgrade and move forward. So that was part of the initial process. The, sign the contract, they'll be in here within 30 days to start doing those types of assessments.
Okay, look forward to the changes. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council?
I'll just say, Vince must be a magnet for complaints.
You'd be surprised.
I'm going to move approval of it.
Okay, there's a motion for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Please vote.
I'm very approachable.
That passes by a five zero vote.
Okay. Our last item of new business is the Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation Account SB1 Funding Program. Staff, please provide your report.
You'll recall, April of 2017, the governor signed SB1, which is Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017. We are eligible for funds. Last year, in September, we approved a project list. Every year, we have to submit a project list. We have that same exact project list moving forward, because that's in our contract. So, we have to adopt a resolution that's required that it's be submitted to the state by August 1st. So, we are at that deadline, and the project list is the same list that was approved last year. It is the same list that is part of our street project that is currently under, under contract. The city council awarded that with RJ Noble a month ago.
Just a point here, this particular item deals with something that, in my opinion, might pose a conflict. And as I've mentioned in the past, and out of an abundance of caution, I'm going to leave the room, because this involves a street that I live on. I would encourage council to note that and do the same. Thank you.
So I have a question. Your recommendation is to, the city council approve the street's project list, but that's not what we're doing. We're submitting a previously approved project list.
It is, each year, it's considered a new project list.
But that list was approved.
Right. It is an ongoing project.
And so it doesn't say that. So it's actually, and I do have a problem with the wording, because it was approved by council already, and we have to submit that. So, I'd like the language changed, because we did, the project list isn't changing here. We couldn't even change the project list, because we'd have to have a council, we'd have to have a council meeting to approve a change in the project list.
So, Councilwoman, I appreciate what you're saying. I think, though, that in terms of the language, we say the list as an ongoing projects. That is stated in the recommended action, that this is, this is a project list as ongoing projects. So, that would constitute previously approved. You know, that would basically, the imply, implication is, an ongoing project has been previously approved. So, with that in mind, that's why the wording is such. I appreciate your concerns, and you certainly can make a motion to change the wording to say something if you want to. Previously approved or something, we can share that.
Sure. After public comment, I will.
Are there any other questions by council? Okay, is there anyone here from the public that would like to comment on this item? Okay. You have another comment?
I make a motion to approve this with the wording that the project list was previously approved by this council.
So, okay.
And if you would kindly put the date that it was previously approved.
September 19.
Thank you.
2017.
Thank you. And that is my motion.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, is there a motion?
We've got a motion.
You've got a motion.
A second?
He already seconded it.
Okay. Then please vote.
So that passes by a four zero vote, with Councilman Rosini absent and abstaining by absentee.
Okay, now we'll move on to the city manager report.
Okay, this is our monthly report, and again, I, the items that are, changes are noted in red, and I can, staff and I are available to answer any question. I would like to note that, for the record, before we go any further, this is the last meeting of both of our interns. Kira will be going back to school at San Francisco State, I believe, before our next meeting, and Eileen Doe has accepted a job, a career opportunity, with the federal government. So we're very pleased and very appreciative of the efforts both of them have given us, and we're going to go on and move forward. But the nature is, we have to say goodbye to good people, and these people have contributed great things to us at a very inexpensive economical rate. So, we're very thankful they've been here, and blessed us with their presence for this short time, but I'd like to make that for the record.
Well, I'd like to thank them both for their services. It's been a pleasure getting to know Eileen, and go out there and make some good money, because you certainly, you certainly deserve it. You're a very bright young woman, and you have a great future ahead of you. And I certainly, it gives me pleasure to see where you're going, actually. I've enjoyed working with Kira the little, the little time she's been here, and maybe she'll come back next year.
Where will the job be located?
So the building is behind the block of Orange. It's one of the Medicare, it's a floor in there.
Okay.
I just wanted to extend my thanks to both of them. I had the opportunity to speak to Eileen beforehand, and she said she wasn't sure if this was, she was uncertain that it was going to be as quick as it was, and I said I had no doubt. said I had no doubt. Her excellence, her attention to detail, her courtesy are evident, and she has nothing but an incredibly bright future ahead of her.
Eileen, I'm just going to miss the music, okay? You play phenomenal music in there. I walk in, I'm like, wow! But thank you for everything you did. You guys, you guys bless this city by being here, and you've done phenomenal work, and we appreciate all of you that come in and, and give service to our community, and we thank you for that.
Without a doubt.
Okay. Congratulations and best of luck to both of you. Okay, thank you for those informative reports. Now we turn to hear individual council member information items. Starting with Councilmember Pitts, do you have any reports or comments to share?
Oh, I probably do. Well, let's see, events attended. Well, I was part of the July 4th parade, which was a blast as usual, and it was fun to be with everybody. You know, thank you again to the fire department, the sheriff's department for all your support for that, for that event. We had phenomenal turnout. I mean, to sit on my little lawn tractor and look down the street and see all those, those children walking the street with their bicycles, walking, parents carrying them and so forth, was absolutely amazing, so. And, and I really want to shout out to Hillary Thomas and thank her for her support for the event. You know, she supports that event quite often, and, and we really appreciate what she does. The other thing, I attended ACCO C event in Newport. It was a great event to network and share ideas with fellow council members around and understand issues that can and will impact the city. You know, it's great to, I, I go to networking events all the time for, for business, and this is, this is a great event for us to, to share ideas and talk about things that, you know, affect our various cities and so forth. As I said earlier, I, I attended three community subcommittee planning meetings held this month. Two things, the discussions were centered around were fundraising, planning, and also the budget and strategic plan that has to be developed for the community center before we can actually go out and seek funding from, from, from folks, so. And then last but not least, the sanitary subcommittee. As I said, there was a postmortem discussion done, looking for improvements and changes in this upcoming area, assess the tradition of the tour and make sure that we are in fact following the original tradition and intent of the event and not try to change it, overhaul it for the wrong reasons. So the committee is doing that as we speak, reaching out to some of our past council members as well as community leaders to understand why it was set up, what we, you know, what, what they did with it, why they did it, who participated and so forth, and how it was done. So I appreciate that effort. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Potem Rossini.
I too attended the 4th of July parade. A special, special word of thanks to Gretchen Ferris, Hillary Thomas, and all of the, the volunteers, all of the businesses that supported such an amazing event. It, the Cool Eye family, it really was phenomenal. I have a, a picture that I took. I was able to attend it with my family, and, and I'll share it, and I'll bring it up. And, and I think it really screams, it, it, it says exactly what Villa Park's about. It's community, it's, it's from the youngest to the oldest. We get together and we have these traditions, and these traditions are important. And it, it obviously was middle of the week, and people were expecting low attendance, quite the contrary. It, it was amazing. It really was amazing. When Gretchen reached out to me and said, our fire truck vendor fell through, I, I think it's really important to note that the fire authority stepped up. They found coverage for the fire engine that was here, knowing full well that we could lose that fire engine if there was a major incident at a moment's notice, they made sure that they stayed there. And the fire authority deserves a huge debt of, excuse me, huge word of thanks as well, and I appreciate that. Just like Councilmember Pitts and Mayor Colacott, I attended several meetings, and you've heard the reports on those from these two gentlemen, and I just wish everybody a wonderful rest of your summer. Please be careful around the pools. We've heard some really tragic circumstances lately in Cota de Casa and Mission Viejo, where infants and toddlers have drowned in pools. I have a pool. I keep my gates locked for a reason. It's not because I'm concerned about somebody vandalizing my property or breaking into my home, it's because, God forbid, a small child gets away. You can never, ever get that back. Please secure your pools. Please secure your homes. Get your kids water safe as soon as possible. Thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Fasenelli.
I've spent the month having many meetings with OUSD, talking about money, talking about the bonds, talking about what's going on at our schools, and where our tax dollars are going to go. So it's been not as much fun, I think, as maybe some of the other council members have had this month, but certainly I'm out there being the watchdog right now because the bond was issued, and we do have some funds that are out there. We want to make sure that they're doing it right, and as of right now, that they are. I did attend the 4th of July, it was very nice, and then my own tradition is to go home and swim in the pool and have fireworks. I am grateful we didn't have any problems this year for the fireworks. It's something that I truly enjoy. There were some problems overall that did not have to do with Villa Park. We did have a lot of aerial fireworks this year, and it's something that was not a Villa Park problem, but it's something that certainly scared a lot of our residents, and it's more of a global problem that I think we'll need to address or maybe have some sort of a briefing with OCFA to see where that came from. I know that last year, we were presented with an end of the year or end of a report for 4th of July. I don't know if we're going to be provided with that this year. And I would certainly like to see that because the aerial fireworks that went off this year were certainly all illegal and very scary for our residents. So something I do want to, I want to bring up there. And other than that, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, 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 these were not, these were not safe incandices. These, these were Disneyland fireworks.
Okay, Councilman Nelson.
I have nothing.
Okay. Well, I'd like to begin my comments by complimenting our merchants and Ben's Asphalt for resurfacing the parking lot in our commercial center. It looks great. The commercial center is private property, and there are 11 landowners. I'd like to thank Ralph's for organizing the project with the other landowners and Ben's Asphalt for their great job repairing and resurfing the pavement and striping. This has made a significant and welcome difference in our commercial center. On July 3rd, I attended the City of Orange, July 3rd extravaganza down at Fred Kelly Stadium. I did a number of other Villa Park residents, and I, I think Councilwoman Fasenelli, you were there too?
For, for an hour, no.
Yeah, it's an, it's an annual event, it's a lot of fun. I, they, the city gave, gave us four tickets, and I was able to take my mom and my disabled sister and her disabled friend, and I think they had the time of their lives. But it's, it's wonderful to see the City of Orange working together with the City of Villa Park and inviting us to their events as we invite them to ours. They also invite us to their annual tree lighting ceremony down at the, the traffic circle in Orange, and that's a great event as well.
The plaza.
The plaza, excuse me. I'm not, I'm not a resident of the City of Orange, I don't know the nuances. Anyway, finally, the day following the last council meeting, I received a call from a televangelist in Toronto, Canada. She reported that one of her parishioners, a resident of Villa Park, had their house foreclosed and was facing imminent eviction. And so I immediately met with the resident, who was an, is an 81-year-old disabled widow with no family, who had been a resident of our city for 35 years. We certainly couldn't allow that resident to end up out on the street. The next day, I presented this information to our Rotary at their weekly meeting, and a number of members stepped forward to help, and I'd especially like to thank Chad Zimmerman, who was the outgoing president of the Rotary for really stepping up to organize that effort. I, however, I'd like to really, especially like to thank our incredible city manager who was able to use his contacts to receive expedited service from the county adult protective services. As a result, the widow is placed in a senior living facility where she is now safe. Again, our city manager continues to impress me, and he really pulled the rabbit out of the hat this time, helping that, that, again, 81-year-old disabled widow with no family to find, end up in a place where she can be, have a safe, warm bed. Now, a couple of weeks ago, another resident shared that he'd observed newspapers piling up on the driveway of another long-term resident here in Villa Park. On investigation, unfortunately, the sheriff found that this resident was deceased. Because Villa Park is a wonderful community, we all love it here, residents tend to stay. And although several families with young children have moved to Villa Park over the past couple of years, we still have, by the census data, we still have the highest median age of any non-leisure world city in Orange County. So I'd like to encourage our residents to continue to look out after their elderly neighbors and our service organizations to continue to find ways to support them. We want to take, support our schoolchildren, we also want to support our seniors so that we can pull together as a community to keep everybody happy and healthy. Anyway, I'd like to thank all of you for the informative reports, yes?
I apologize, I had one thing I wanted to add when you're finished with your comment. I apologize for interrupting you.
Okay.
Two things. A few months back, we began discussions again about the Community Emergency Response Team, or CERT team. This program has had some challenges, but I see a very bright horizon. The Orange County Fire Authority has graciously agreed to put on CERT training. We're not formulating the team, we're providing training to members of our community that would like to assist others in times of disaster. The dates and times have not been selected yet, but I would encourage anybody who's interested to contact City Hall, leave your name, your phone number, your address and your email address, and we will contact you when we have those dates and times in mind. I'd like to thank Steve, Councilmember Pitts, for his comments on the matter, the Orange County Fire Authority, and look forward to attending this training and seeing our residents who are interested try to help out the community. Hopefully, we never have to use the training, but God forbid. If we do, we'll have, we'll have something in place. And that's really about it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn the?
Mayor, if I could just, the weather, the inclement weather, and just as an advisory, the, there's a heat activation plan that goes into effect. The Villa Park library serves as a cooling center from 10 o'clock in the morning until 7 o'clock in the evening. Their air conditioning works better than this room, so that's good news.
That was the other thing I wanted to mention, thank you. I, I couldn't remember, is when I contacted you, we confirmed that it's the library, not the city council chambers.
The library, and that will be, that's open Monday through Thursday and Saturday as well, but so tomorrow being Wednesday, it will be open in the event that temperatures exceed high index. So if people want to come in and cool down, there's an opportunity, especially with the new furniture, to read and visit our library before she leaves.
And it's beautiful over there.
It's amazing.
It really is.
It really is amazing.
And the chairs are comfortable.
Yes.
However, if you really want to freeze, we've got a conference room in the back.
Vouch for that.
Okay, so is there a motion to adjourn to a regular meeting on August 28th, 2018 at 6:30?
So moved.
Okay, we adjourned, thank you.